I would invite everyone to rise and join in the Fledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to God, of the United States of America, and to the very highest court of his hands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phil, if we could have roll call, please.
Craig Toshaw.
Here.
Matt Darn.
Here.
Tyler Colencan.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Wiley Surt.
Here. You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our January 2nd council meeting. If you've had a chance to review the minutes, I'd look for a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes from January 2nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Thank you. First thing on our agenda this evening is I'm going to have Mark Sullivan from Midwestern Engineering come forward to discuss our Utility Capital Improvement Plan, which was put together by Midwestern. While he's doing it, there's a lot of pictures on the PowerPoint. I'm not sure what most of them are.
There's a variety. There's pictures of the Winchester Street Plant and Monroe Street Plant. I'm not sure Bill, Bill may know which plant that is.
Winchester.
That's Winchester. Well, tonight, my goal was, I think, for the most part, the group has heard me speak two or three times as we've progressed over the last time's passing fast. I think we've been working on this now a year and a half, maybe pushing two years. So essentially, the scope of the project is still the same. We continue to refine things and as it keeps moving forward. But tonight, I just wanted to kind of refresh your memories on just the general scope of the project and just the basics of why are you doing this? As you may know, you have two water treatment plants here in Decatur. You have a well field that's out northeast of town. That well field serves the Monroe Street Plant. Then you have the Winchester Street Plant to the south, and it's served by a well field that's cleared out at Burne. So quite a ways away. In a nutshell, the reason you're doing the project is both plants have met their useful life and probably far beyond their useful life. We kind of tongue-in-cheek, and I've learned this from Bill, that your new plant is over 50 years old. So and that's the one we refer to as the new one. And I think Monroe is what, Bill? I think pushing 70 years old. So I think it's 1953 and in the 70s when the two were built. So the good thing is, is you've got, you've got the life out of those plants. The bad news is, the well field to the north is nearing the end of its useful life. I think it's also nearing the end of your lease that you have on the property. So that definitely was a driving force, that we were going to have to find another source of water. Also, the Monroe Street Plant, which is the older plant, has softeners in it, but no other means of treatment. You need iron filters to treat the iron in the water. Currently, you're forced to use the softeners at the plant to do iron treatment, and that's not really a good thing. It can, it can do it somewhat, but what happens is, is the media within the softeners is worn out. You have to replace it frequently because it's not made to do iron treatment. One of the things that is unique, not so much to Decatur, but in this corner of the state, we see it more than anything, is the need for softening. The water, the raw water is extremely hard up in this corner of the state. So we see more softeners in this northeast corner of Indiana than we do anywhere else in the state. So because of the age of the plants, because of the end of the life of the well field to the northeast, it's necessary to find another source of water. Our original goal was to maintain two water plants in town. Because you have two, that redundancy is a nice thing. In general terms, by having two plants, you can have one go down, you can service one and still have the other meet your, your water needs. Whereas if you only have one plant, it's a lot trickier to take things out of service and to service it. And that redundancy provides a more continuous or a more dependable water service to the community. So communities that have the ability to have two or a redundant plant are always happy or even more happier with that, that scenario. So that's one of the things that, that we're trying to move forward, is to maintain that two-plant scenario. So the whole kicker that we had to, to get over the hump and to accomplish the two-plant scenario and a new well field was, we identified a potential site, or I say "we," actually Peerless Midwest, working with the city, did a technology called Fracture Trace Analysis, where they can look from aerial photos and they can identify seams, a lot of things that would be like ravines across fields. It provides an indication that the underground structure, the underground bedrock where there's a valley, two seams or two fractures in that bedrock generally come together way down underneath that. By drilling test wells into those seams, they increase the likelihood of finding water. As much as we, we laugh about it, that's a far better technology than out there with your witching rods trying to find water. We were successful, or Midwest, Peerless Midwest was successful with three test wells, providing the amount of water that we were going to need to establish a new east side plant. So the recommendation is to build a new east side plant out on existing city-owned property out east of town. Another good thing, you already own the property. So we are looking at positioning a new water treatment plant out there. You have three successful wells in the ground, so we know we've got the water. The last thing to do would be to install the fourth well as we move forward. So that hurdle's been accomplished. You know that you can have the new well out east. As they will discuss when we get into the cost of things, the first phase that's being proposed is to address the wells out east and to address the east side plant. And then follow up, the last part, or the second phase of the project would be to address renovation of the Winchester Street Plant and rehabilitation or renovation of the raw water main from Burne coming up. By sequencing that way, you can get the new plant put in out east. It can carry the load of the city then, when you take Winchester out of service, to do those repairs. Again, the nice, the niceness of having redundancy of two plants. So that's a very quick overview without taking a lot of your time, just to refresh your memory on what the scope of the project is. There are some other ancillary things, some lines in town that are undersized that we're going to upsize and create loops, create better water pressure for the public in some of those areas where, where the system may be kind of constrained and kind of tight, which would limit their pressure. So there are some improvements to the system that are being done also as part of the project. If there's any questions, I'll answer any questions you have, and then other than that, I won't take any more time.
If we put up a new east side plant, will that be able to take care of all of Decatur with that plant alone, standalone, or will we need assistance from the?
No, it will be able to. The only thing that, that I always advise the community to be careful of, if it's going to be standalone, you can control that somewhat by not relying upon it during your heavy usage, i.e. when it's August and you're watering yards and you're using your maximum water. But yes, it is set up so that it will cover the entire community, and Winchester can be taken out of service. And in fact, that's what we'll do when we renovate it, is take it completely out of service and rely on that. Typically, the plants, when they're running together, both of them, will run about a half a day, the two of them. So in theory, then, if you run one all day long continuously, it can make up another half of the day that the other plant's out of service.
I know we had, was it three pumps with 450 gallons per minute at the new well site?
Correct.
Is the quality of the water better than what it was over here, or is it the same?
I don't know. I would say better. I would say the same. Consistent, consistent. Still needs softening, still needs softening because it's hard water. It's got iron in it, so you, the one thing that we're proposing with the new plant is it will have iron filters to treat the iron, it'll have softeners to treat for the water hardness. The nice thing now, you're going to have a plant that's designed to treat iron and not depend on the softeners trying to limp along doing it. Now, your Winchester Street Plant, it has iron filters and softeners, so it, it's kind of set up, it was a later vintage, and it was designed to treat iron. This one wasn't. The new one will be.
So these softeners wouldn't need as much maintenance as frequently as what currently is happening?
Correct, correct. And as another discussion that we've had on this, one of the downsides of softeners, at least with the type that you have, there are larger versions of what you see in your house, where you use salt to regenerate them, regenerate and establish the media again. Well, that regenerated salt or chloride, NACL, if it's not disposed of properly or if it's disposed of in large quantities, can have a detrimental effect on your wastewater treatment plant, which you are seeing. We are entering this project cognizant and knowing that we've got to deal with that salt to limit the violations down at the wastewater treatment.
I remember you mentioning that before.
Yeah. So.
Couple other things. With the, I realize redundancy is helpful when we shut down the Winchester Plant and renovate the transmission line from the Burne well field to there. But is it not also that you're trying to anticipate future growth and by having the two, the combination of the two, it should put us in a position that allows us to cover growth for the next 20 years or so?
Yes. And that's always customary in the engineering field. Whenever you do a renovation like this, you also want to make sure that you address what would be reasonable growth over the next 20 years. Now, some of that, you know, requires a crystal ball, or, but you tend to historically look at census data, you know, how's Decatur been growing over the last 20, 30 years? And you can expect a similar type of growth. And so yes, that is built in. We don't just size it for where you're at today. We build in a little bit of growth for that 20-year factor.
Another question that I have is, the, the treatment plants are considered a critical structure as far as FEMA and Homeland Security, that sort of thing. The Monroe Plant is in a flood zone. So if I understand correctly, even if we wanted to update and renovate the plant, we're probably prohibited from doing so because it is in a flood zone.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. That's a very good point. In fact, if you watch the screens as it keeps cycling through, when you see the picture of a lot of water, the island that you see in the center is Monroe Street Water Plant, surrounded completely by water. Even if we wanted to renovate that plant where it's at right now, most likely the state wouldn't permit it because it is indeed in a flood zone.
And that picture that is going to slide in, was just from 2015?
Yeah, yeah.
Which wasn't the worst, which wasn't the worst flood?
That wasn't a weird air flood.
Right, that wasn't the worst, that wasn't the worst water we've, we've taken on.
Yeah.
You know, three, it was within an inch of coming over the dock and coming into doors. We canoe to the plant.
What is that right there, Bill?
That's the reaction basin, and that's where all the wastewater comes from the water plant. And it, it's in a reservoir so that we don't flood the lift station, so the lift station can take the water.
The red color would be the iron. That's from the backwash of the iron filters.
Okay.
All right, well, I think that's all I had to get you up to speed. I'll yield my time on to the, to the next group.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have Craig Lottz and Jennifer, help me, Jennifer. Wilson, I knew that, from Crowell Hallaw, and they're going to make a presentation regarding the City Water Preliminary Rate and Financing Report, so that we can figure out exactly, there's the picture of the flood, flood area, figure out exactly how we're going to go about paying for all this new plant and all the remodeling. So Craig, go right ahead. Should we follow along in our packets here, or, I don't even know if the guys brought theirs or not, but?
Yes, I'll make reference to different pages throughout the report. Thank you for the introduction. Again, I'm Craig Lottz, and working with Jennifer Wilson from Crowell Hallaw, the rate consultants with the water utility and with the city. To describe the purpose of our analysis, it was kind of twofold. The first step is taking a look back at the financial performance of the utility over three prior periods, the year ending December 31st, 2015, also in 2016, and then the 12 months ending May 31st, 2017. That, that last period I mentioned is what we call the test year, and we worked with that year to get more updated information, to get a better financial picture of the utility. The purpose of our report is not only to look back at that period, but to look forward based upon a lot of those capital projects that were mentioned, incorporating those into an analysis, also incorporating changes into the operating and maintenance expenses of the utility. We also factor in looking at the current debt payments of the utility, what is the utility paying on long-term debt? And then when analyzing the, the future and planned capital expansions, to try to factor in and model debt that would be issued by the utility and taken on as an obligation moving forward. And so when analyzing all of those things and putting them together, we develop what we call revenue requirements. And again, that is what the utility would incur to operate and improve its water system. So that's, that's describing an overview of what we have done, and I'll walk through some highlights of that report now. The first few pages are doing that historical look back of the utility and reflecting the balance sheet and income statement. I think that's shown that the utility has been fairly consistent over the past three periods and is in a healthy financial position. Moving into the area I referenced before, on page nine, that's looking more towards the future, not as much looking back, but how can we look at our operating results from the past year and adjust those to model what an operating year would look like moving forward, both on the revenue side and the expense side? On the revenue side, we made adjustments for revenue of a prior rate increase effective August of 16, to moving forward, making sure we're accounting for all the revenues the utility would expect to collect from rate payers. Also on the expense side, we make adjustments as well, both to increase expenses for any known items that we know will be increased cost to the utility. Additionally, we've removed some expense items as well to factor out items that are non-recurring in nature that the utility wouldn't necessarily incur in normal operating year, or maybe more capital in nature and would be funded through the Capital Improvement Plan that was just previously discussed. So all it says, our, our objective is to look at the income statement of the utility and make adjustments to have a, a good model moving forward of what the utility would expect. And those are described in more detail on pages 10 through 12 of the report. On page 13, that describes another depiction of the Capital Improvement Plan that was just discussed. These are, again, numbers that were put together by Midwest Engineering and also by the utility that outline the timing and expense amount for future, future capital expense items. We evaluate these numbers and determine, and part of our analysis is figuring how could these best be paid for by the utility, looking at bonding options through long-term debt issuances, and also funding pay-as-you-go, using cash on hand of the utility. We incorporated both of those strategies in our analysis, taking a look at the first two years of 2018 and 2019. And we identified a few projects marked with an asterisk on those pages that are incorporated into one of two bond issues that we would propose, and those would be the 2018 bonds. Those are covering some of the projects already discussed, the east side well field and treatment plant and associated costs. I'd like to make a note of why we're proposing two different bond issuances, one in 2018 and one in 2020. Tax law has certain restrictions on the timing of spending of bond proceeds, and in order to comply with those timing restrictions of 24 months, it's not practical based upon this timeline extending between 2018 and 2021 to issue one bond and complete all projects within a 24-month period. So in order to accommodate that timing, the, the analysis reflects two different bond proceeds. One in 2018 to cover projects for 2018 and 2019, and then second bond issue in 2020 to cover those capital projects from 2020 and 2021. And so as I mentioned before, the, the projects that would be funded through a, a long-term bond issuance, the 2018 bonds are marked with an asterisk on the Capital Improvement Plan. Projects that are marked with the carrot symbol, and those would be funded through the 2020 bonds, and again, those relate to projects with timing expected of years 2020 and 2021. You'll note that a few of the items listed on the Capital Improvement Plan don't have a symbol associated with them. Those are projects that the utility would pay with that pay-as-you-go method that I mentioned earlier, where you're using cash on hand. You're not borrowing to pay for those given projects. Instead, you are, are building up cash to pay for those. And so we'll see a little bit that those constitute a separate revenue requirement that the utility would need to plan for to collect from rate payers. At the bottom of the page, you can see that the average capital improvement plan would be funded by revenue, and those, that again represents the amount that the utility would need to have on hand to fund those projects that they are not bonding for. For 2018 and 2019, that's an average amount of $475,000 approximately. For the four-year period reflected in the Capital Improvement Plan, that pay-as-you-go amount is $406,000. Pages 14 through 17 provide a little more insight into those two bond issues that I mentioned, the 2018 bonds and the 2020 bonds. Beginning with the 2018 bonds, the, the total project fund paying for those utilities, really the projects identified on page 13, total project funds come to $8.5 million approximately. Also funded through this bond issuance is a debt service reserve fund, which would, is a security blanket for the bonds that the bond ordinance would mandate be held. I'd like to note that we assume that the 2018 bonds and the 2020 bonds would both be open market issuances. I mean, it's not going through a specific program, but that the, the open market would be able to bid upon these bonds. And so with that in mind, there are costs associated, such as underwriters discount that the underwriter would collect. We also factored in a bond insurance premium of $50,000, and the intent of that is to secure insurance for the bonds in order to drive down borrowing costs in the open market. If potential buyers are able to see that a deal is insured, they're willing to purchase those bonds at a lower interest rate, meaning interest savings to the water utility. Other costs include a cost of issuance for legal municipal advisory, rating fees potentially or trustee fees, and then additional proceeds. Page 15 shows an amortization, estimated amortization of those 2018 bonds. You'll note that it's a, a 20-year term with a final maturity of January 1st, 2038. To develop the coupon rate or interest rate for these bonds, we used an index of BAA-rated bonds, that is, these are a national index that's distributed in use, and then we added a cushion of 70 basis points. And what that means is trying to factor in uncertainty of interest rates, that they fluctuate all the time, making sure that we build in a cushion so that the water utility, when setting rates, is able to make debt service payments, even though we're not able to guarantee at what rates those bonds would sell for. So all in all, the max annual debt service on those 2018 bonds, you can see, comes in just under $695,000. For those capital projects funded in 2020 and 2021, those would be, the projects related to those would be through the 2020 bonds on page 16 and 17. The structure of this bond issue will look very similar to those 2018 bonds, and this time it's a project funded $8 million and a lot of the related costs and uses that I identified before. On page 17, it's a very similar structure, 20 years, this time, when estimating those interest rates, we incorporated a cushion of 120 basis points. The rationale behind that is if bonds were issued in 2020, that's just more time in which interest rates could fluctuate. So to try to be a little bit more conservative and ensuring that the utility can make those payments on what the rates would actually be, and that accounts for a higher amount of cushion that is built into those rates. On page 18, that's a summary of what the estimated debt portfolio of the utility looks like, including the existing 2017 refunding bonds, the proposed 2018 bonds and proposed 2020 bonds. In total, that results in a maximum annual debt service of just over 1.5 million, and that max debt service amount would occur in year 2024. Page 19 is a summary of those revenue requirements that I alluded to earlier. The revenue requirement, again, is a summation of all of the different items that the utility would incur as a part of operating and improving the utility. Based upon the timing of those capital projects outlined in the Capital Improvement Plan, that resulted in sort of a natural phasing and a breaks between phases one and two. The difference between phase one and two is really those 2018 and 2020 bonds. As, after the utility issues the 2020 bonds, it'll put more of a revenue requirement on the utility to pay for those projects. And so the 2020 bonds result in a, a second increase to ultimately come to the full amount that the utility would be required to collect moving forward. To walk through those phase one and two revenue requirements, it begins with the adjusted operation and maintenance expenses. Again, those are expenses from the 12 months ended May 31st, 2017, that we adjusted either up or down for items that we would anticipate to change, increase, or decrease. That's the same with adjusted taxes of the income taxes. The current max annual debt service listed represents the, the current 2017 refunding bonds that are outstanding with the utility now. The next, in phases one and two, is the proposed max debt service on the 2018 bonds, coming in at just under $700,000. Again, phase one does not reflect any revenue requirement for 2020 bonds, because phase one would be aligned to be implemented in 2018 and through 2019. Yet in phase, in phase two, in 2020, that would be the advent of the debt service on the 2020 bonds at right around $680,000. The last item, the estimated annual extensions and replacements, relates to that pay-as-you-go financing that we discussed earlier on the Capital Improvement Plan, in which the utility is not bonding for or issuing debt for projects, but rather funding those projects through cash on hand. In phase one, the $475,000 amount will tie directly to that cash-funded amount for 2018 and 2019. For phase two, it's a little bit different in that the $451,000 incorporated into the revenue requirements, that's a little over the amount of cash-funded projects needed. However, that $451,000 is needed to provide coverage on the outstanding debt of the utility. If you look down at the below calculation, calculation A, it takes the max annual debt service of the utility that we calculated on the prior page of $1.5 million, and it multiplies by a coverage factor of 30%. The authorizing documents for both the existing 2017 bonds and the proposed 2018 and 2020 bonds will contain a coverage requirement of 25%. And that's a part of the covenant that the city makes with the And that's a part of the covenant that the city makes with bondholders, that the revenues of the water utility will exceed debt service, I'm sorry, not the revenues, but the net revenues after removing operation and maintenance expenses and some taxes, that that net amount will exceed debt service payments by at least the 25% coverage factor. So what we want to make sure in phase two is that the coverage factor is sufficient to make sure that the utility can comply with those debt covenants.
Craig, the higher the coverage, the more attractive the bonds are, and that will help drive down interest rates, is that correct?
Correct. That coverage will certainly be a factor that potential buyers of the bond will look at when deciding what interest rate to give. Looking down at total revenue requirements for phases one and two, it comes out to $2.5 million and $3.15 million for phase two. We then back out the adjusted operating revenues, which for phase one, again, those are the revenues from May 31, 2017, adjusted for any increases in effect of the August 2016 rate increase. After removing the adjusted operating revenues, that results in the deficit, the respective deficits for phases one and two of $701,000 and $647,000. Were the utility and were you to approve a rate increase, you don't necessarily realize every dollar of new revenue generated because of the utility receives tax. And that accounts for the revenue conversion factor that we utilize to come up with a gross amount, so to speak, of revenues that would be needed in order to cover the deficit outlined. That gives you the revenue increase required of $711,000 and $657,000. Dividing that by the adjustable operating revenues, or those revenues that would be affected by a rate increase, so for example, that excludes miscellaneous income that wouldn't necessarily be consistent year to year, and that results in the percent rate increase required of 40% for phase one, and for phase two, an additional 27% rate increase. Page 2021 of the report summarizes the effects of those calculated rate increases on the recent charges of the utility. I think the more meaningful way of looking at those rate increases is on page 22, with a typical monthly bill analysis. This is a sheet that outlines current charges that are charged to inside the city utility customers with a 5/8 inch meter, which is the standard meter for a residential user. A lot of times, we would use a typical or average consumption rate of 668 cubic feet, which is equal to 5,000 gallons. So to understand the impact on that customer, take a look at the 600 cubic feet line, I think would be helpful. You'll see that after the phase one increase, a customer could expect to pay $10.08 more per month for their utility bill. After the phase two increase, you can expect an additional $9.51 per month. And again, that's based on 600 cubic feet, that those amounts may vary depending upon usage, because that will certainly be a factor. That's an overall summary of the analysis that we conducted. I'd be happy to answer any questions or go back to any areas for additional comment.
One thing I wanted to ask, I guess I didn't ask when we were here the other day, and that was on the projects that we're going to do included in this, as far as some water main replacements, we have High Street, Homestead, County Road 500, and Winchester Road, okay? And I guess I should look to Bill and Jeremy on this one, but, you know, should we have put more into this? Do we have other areas that we should have included that are nightmare spots where we're out there every week repairing them?
A lot of our more problem areas are smaller areas that could be accomplished as time allows, in-house, and eight-month-long contracts. I think, you know, Bill and I have talked for probably three years on a lot of these water areas. There is a couple of extensions in there that are very critical that could have helped us immensely about four years ago or almost five years ago, when we had major freeze and the loss of the water. You know, it could have very easily helped us maintain some of the water supply we had. They're all very important. Obviously, there's a lot more areas that are going to need to be addressed, but, you know, we really need to draw money someplace, you know, and accomplish what we've accomplished and address the rest of it.
Replacing the main at the High Street and Homestead, that alone, I mean, if you consider how many man-hours we have every year out there repairing water main breaks, it's going to save us some money there, so.
The last couple of weeks, when we really broke cold, and we went through a lot of our friends and stuff, and organizing some plants, we found friends of these water mains we put in in, what, 1980, early 1900s that are still in the ground, you know, and there's ones right up from here. Yeah, there's a lot of age in the ground that, you know, at some point, we're going to have to be aggressive, and we can't solve it all in one day, you know, obviously, we need to keep these away in a lot of these areas. You know, this winter, we ended, we ended the year really, really busy when it got cold, and we started the year really, really busy. You know, our total leaks went down in 17 compared to 16 by about 12 main breaks, you know, so we are making some headway. But, you know, you take the last two or three weeks, four weeks, with the temperatures going up and down, and up and down, and 10 falling below zero, you know, it's very detrimental to our infrastructure, you know. We're just, we're a little bit behind the eight ball, we're trying to make up some time, we're trying to make some headway, but.
Detrimental to the infrastructure, it's hard on our employees, and to keep them healthy, right, Don?
Yeah. In 2016, we had 64 main breaks. We talked to a lot of other committees our size, they may have 20, 30, maybe.
And every time we have those water main breaks, it seems like they never happen at 8:00 in the morning, they always happen at night or on a weekend, and that all amounts to overtime.
Jeremy, what kind of estimate would you give, a ballpark price, what it costs to, what a water main break to fix it?
You're looking between $300 to $400 just in the parts alone, if it's just a standard leak, just for the clamp. You have, I think, a couple thousand, you think, $2,000 to $3,000, easy on a minimal leak.
$3,000.
Yeah, $3,000 to $10,000, depending on what you get into. You know, and you can see kind of why the overhead gets a little exhausting sometimes with some of these, because it's, some of the areas that we continually go back to. You know, you have a leak a month ago, you go maybe tomorrow, and you're digging 10 or 15 feet down the way from it. You know, two years ago, you could have been 15 feet, you know, so at some point, you got to go back, and you have to cut all that out. You know, that's a lot of additional time. Like Ken said, it's not at 8:00 in the morning, it's 2:00 in the morning on Christmas Day, Christmas Eve. You know, and sometimes it gets very frustrating, but, you know, I feel we're making some strides in getting a lot of these areas taken care of. It just comes to a point that, you know, we need to look at the rates, and we need to look at long-term, you know. We can have, we can make all the improvements in streets, you know, and water services, but if we don't have the quality of water to pump to our businesses, it's really hard to achieve.
Kevin, did you want to go over anything? Did you want to go over the overall, this sheet at all for the record?
Somebody stole my copy.
I got two of them. I didn't steal it, though. Does anyone have a copy of this? I think you do, right? Kevin, you want to kind of go through this and explain it a little bit?
All this is, is it lays out what our current rates are for the total utility bill, and what they would go to in 1821. The far-left column, number of users, you can basically disregard that, that's an, this is an old kind of system that they used to use, one cubic foot per person per day is the standard that was always used of what the typical user is. Personally, I have six people in my family. We do not come close to the 1,800 cubic feet, we're more than 700 cubic feet.
As a matter of fact, I had you just run 10 families scenario yesterday, and I think there was one family of six that maybe used 1,000.
Just over 1,000.
But most of them were down in the.
And they also had a hot tub and stuff like that, too, so.
Most of them were down in the, you know, 400, 500, 600 at the most.
400 to 800, it all depends on family size and how old the kids are, or if you have multiple adults, or multiple teenagers is always a big. But our average residential usage that we bill in town is 400 cubic feet. So that would put you right in between the first two numbers there. Like I said, your average family is going to be right in, like Craig said, two, is right around the 600 range. So if you're in the 400 range, you can see your bill go from at least $70 to about $76, with the first rate hike, $77. And then an additional $6, $7 on top of that in 2020.
And that includes everything?
That's the entire bill, yeah, that includes tax.
Fire protection.
Fire protection goes up as well with that.
Yeah, yeah. And then the next couple of pages on that, just to kind of break.
The next few pages, the first page is more of a reference, the next one actually breaks down what the tax and fire protection will go to as well, and the totals of each of 2018 and 2020 increases would be.
If I'm looking at right and I'm referencing page 18, our current bonding will retire in 2027, is that correct? Page 18.
Yes, that's correct.
Craig, is there a built-in ability to refund the bonds after a period of time, or do you not anticipate that?
Those could be built in through the ordinances that are developed for those bonds.
Right.
That's not currently modeled into a debt service for those.
Okay. I mean, typically, you would refund if interest rates are going down, the trend is that they're going to be going up. So one of the, one of the concerns is the longer we put this off, the potential for greater costs and a greater rate increase if we enter a greater cost, because the debt service is higher. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I think with the introduction of more time, it's just more uncertainty with interest rates, given we're in a historically low interest rate environment, it's tough to see it going down, so I think that that is a fair statement.
So what's the next phase here? There were other ways of financing this, through state revolving loan funds and through USDA. However, those would take us more time to get to them, I mean, to get the funding. While we're waiting on them, interest rates can be fluctuating, which we anticipate that they will be. So is it pretty much, is it your recommendation that bonding in the open market like this is our smartest bang for the buck right now?
I think based upon the timing expressed in the Capital Improvement Plan, I think that that does make sense. Through the SRF program, you wouldn't necessarily expect to see those proceeds until the fall, right about the time that they start getting cold and freezing. And then also with the SRF program, you could have the potential for a, the program rate, which is in interest savings, however, there's also, there comes with requirements to fund a debt service reserve through cash, and that would be an added revenue requirement that would be incorporated into the analysis, so it's not a certainty of interest rate savings, or not interest rate, rather, but overall savings to the utility in short term. And then if you are, if you don't receive the program rate by the ranking and prioritizing the SRF program, then you would receive the pool rate, which is going to more closely resemble market rates.
Mark, assuming that we do the 2018 bond, I mean, it's going to take some time to get the plant constructed and up and running. Do we have a, I mean, if we, the intent is if we bond, we could get started possibly sometime late summer, early fall, is that?
Are you referring to construction?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's feasible, probably at the earliest, but probably four to five month design period to get ready to start bidding, there would be a little bit of permits in there, but that's probably a fair statement, is late summer, early fall.
Okay. And how long will that process then take? I mean, are we into?
Construction period.
Yeah.
Probably a little in excess of a year, 12 to 15 months.
Okay.
No shorter than 12, and probably realistically 15 months.
And we're, our well fields are drying up that we currently have, and our lease is probably up in another.
I don't know, for certain, I think within five years.
Three to five years. So it's somewhat important that we get going on this.
Hey, Mark, quick question. At the end of that 15 months from time of construction completion, does that mean we'll be pulling water out of the east plant? Does that mean we'll be utilizing it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That would be total operation.
Okay.
Starting up and going.
All right.
Which we'd have to be to then phase into the second phase of rebuilding Winchester. Correct?
So if we don't start this, we don't have, we can't count on that plant being rolling for at least two years, and you're saying that if we go, we'll be pulling water out of a new plant in about two years?
Yeah, a little under.
A little under two years.
And with our lease coming up on the wells, and the fact that, how many wells are out there? Eight?
There was 10, we're down to five operational.
So only half of the wells are producing, and they're not producing as good as they were. We have a, we have a water plant that's, what is it, 70-some years old, that we can't do any improvements on because it's in a flood plain.
Correct.
And we have another plant that we call our new plant, which is still 50-ish years old.
Almost 50 years old.
I mean, it's just, I think, fiscally, it's the responsible thing for us to do. Everybody likes to drink water, everyone likes to take a shower, and I think it's, while we hate raising rates, I mean, nobody in here wants to raise our water rates. I think it's, you know, we don't have much choice.
I did have just a thought, too, on the east, the building the new one, would the Monroe Street.
Would the Monroe Street Plant still stay up and running if needed while construction of the Winchester? Or what's the thinking there?
Potentially. We toyed with that idea. It's just an additional, I mean, it's...
Just as a safeguard?
Just a safeguard, that's a good word. You took it out of my mind. So yes, we've looked at that. But again, like we discussed earlier, the new East Side Plant is going to have to pass these and deal with it. So we'll kind of look at that a little...
But there's always that 1% chance of something unforeseen.
Yes. Oh, I agree with you. I agree.
Any other comments for Kevin, for Craig or Jennifer, or for Mark?
It is, it has to be done to keep the quality of water that our residents expect and our company. And if we're going to be a community that wants to bring in more business, more, you know, industry, we want to promote growth, we've got to have the quality of water, so...
And with the new plant as well, you know, we'll have iron filters, so the water coming from that plant will be a better quality than what it is coming out of the road.
That's a good point, too.
If there are no other questions, I guess what we were kind of suggesting this evening is that we, Tim has prepared an ordinance to move forward on this.
Yeah, I can explain a little bit, and Jennifer can certainly jump in as well. I've spoken with Tom Pittman, and I asked Tom if he and Jennifer can put together a timetable or a timeline and the appropriate steps that would need to be taken. But one of the first things that we need to do is to establish the rate increases if council is so inclined, as suggested in the report. And once that's in place, then the next step would be to adopt a bond ordinance that would authorize the bonding along the lines of what's been suggested. And it would be a series of two bonds, one in 2018 and one in 2020, to fit with the construction schedules that are anticipated in the capital improvement plan. So what would happen is, we would start the rate, water rate increase by introducing the ordinance. You would adopt that on two readings, and then we would table it and hold a public hearing on it. And it would be after the public hearing that you would take final action on the rate ordinance itself. In the meantime, I've talked to Tom, and Tom will be preparing the bond ordinance. And once that's prepared, then that'll be routed around for review, and then that would be adopted. Once that's done, then you start the process of going through, developing information to market the bonds. And Jennifer, I don't know an outside timeframe, but are, you know, assuming that everything goes forward as we're anticipating, you know, are we placing the bonds sometime in April or May or June, somewhere in that range?
Yes, that's feasible. We'll be developing the timetable with Tom, but just preliminary giving time to do all those tasks and to prepare the marketing for the bond, you could have money in the bank as soon as April or May.
Okay. So once we have that in place, then in the meantime, we can be working towards developing the information that we need in order to put out bids and start construction. So, you know, everything kind of falls into place, and it's just a sequence of steps that you have to take in order to get to the point where we can actually start turning dirt and getting the plant up and running.
If we agree and approve the rate increase, when would the first rate, when would that take?
The initial increase would go into effect the first billing cycle following passage of the ordinance. So you don't do it midstream, so we'd wait until we're starting a new billing cycle, and that's when it would go into effect.
Early March.
Yeah.
Early March.
And then the second rate increase would take effect with the first billing cycle in 2020.
So that would be January of 2020?
January of 2020.
Yeah, first week of January, roughly.
Yeah.
In the last two years, I've toured these plants, I've been out to the well fields, I've discussed it with the department heads, how big of a problem it is to deal with the pipe that's in the ground. I kind of made a vow that I wouldn't pave another road unless the infrastructure underneath it was proper, because I think it's a big waste of money if we do that. I think we've stayed the course. We've done the wells, we've permitted that, we've done the testing, we've taken the right steps in the right direction, and I think that this is the course we need to go. My earlier thought was, what do comparative cities around us do? But if we're going to be a growing, leading community, I think we gotta take these steps for our own citizens at this time and not worry about... I think you folks said that you've asked for other rates of similar size, but I've also talked to Mark, and he said, "A lot of people are on our heels when it comes to these projects. They aren't quite as far along as we are." So we can either sit around and wait and be a follower, or we can follow the plan that we've made in the last several years to go ahead and correct this. And I'm in favor of following through with the plan.
Great. And one other thing that I would add is, I want everybody to think back to four, five years ago when we had the major rupture of the line and lost almost all the water in two of our three towers. We had to shut down the system, we were on our boil order. Our workforce did a phenomenal job in awful conditions in getting that repaired and getting us up and running again. But the impact was felt not just in households, but it was felt by businesses throughout our city. That had a huge economic impact to us. If we want to avoid that happening in the future, you need to take these kind of steps. And if you look at what one of the fundamental functions of city government it is, is it's to provide and protect for the public health and safety. And one of those critical elements is providing clean water. So this is very, very much fundamentally a responsibility, a basic responsibility of city government.
Yes.
Well said. Kevin, on the same sheet that we just reviewed there, the one you have, just for the record, a minimum user, which we have a lot of senior citizens with, you know, it's one or two families.
The minimum is 360 or less, and like I said, our average residential bill's 400 cubic feet. So a good majority is right at the minimum, or close to the minimum. So yeah, currently at 63.49 for a minimum total utility bill in 2018, it would go to $70.43 in 2020, 76.99.
Right. So about a $7 increase for a minimum user on their total utility bill, including sanitation, stormwater, sewage, fire protection, water, and the taxes that go on them.
And the utility bill is user fees. I mean, it's not like it's subsidized by the tax dollars that you're paying in. This is what it takes to run these...
These utilities are all funded from the utility bill.
Utilities. We're not raising the rates to put money in the bank somewhere, it's just to provide the service to keep...
This is one of those decisions that council has to make. It's not a fun decision to make, but then again, like Tim said, it's our responsibility to provide good services to our community and clean drinking water, and is of the utmost importance. So, you know, with that, this evening, we could go ahead and introduce the ordinance, do two readings. Our next council meeting isn't for three weeks from this evening, February 5th, February 6th. And at that February 6th meeting, then we would have a public hearing, take the public's concerns and hear them. And after addressing all of them, then we would move forward with the third and final reading if we so chose to do so at that time.
Tim, I got one question. Do you have to introduce an ordinance to have a public meeting on an ordinance?
Yeah, typically, you introduce it. Now, our procedure here locally is that we adopt it on two readings, and then we table it for a third and final reading. And typically, you don't adopt the ordinance until final passage. So the, or until after you, you don't, in this kind of ordinance, you don't adopt it on final passage until you've held a public hearing. So, you know, if we only had one reading, then we would hold a public hearing before we took action.
I guess my only question on it is, is it seems funny to pass an ordinance before you hear from the public, but it's...
We're not adopting it on the third reading, though. It's just, it's kind of like a warning.
And you can, I mean, you could establish, you could schedule a public hearing if you wish before you do it, but you're going to delay the process a couple of weeks at least.
I guess I look at it, this is an announcement of what we are considering.
Pretty much, yeah. You know, I look at the utility ordinance that we did two readings on, you know, and it's later on our agenda again tonight, we're going to table it again. We're not going to do that third reading until we're...
My only question is, is that complicate things more because now that we're looking at that one, we're postponing it and having to rewrite it and go back and back tread, whereas if we would have that meeting first, we wouldn't have to do all the back work.
You can definitely...
I mean, even if you had the public meeting and at that time you decided that that's what you're interested in, you could pass it on all three readings if you wanted, correct?
Yeah, you could. The normal procedure that we follow in D Cator has always been that you introduce it, adopt it on first two readings, and then hold your public hearing before you take final action. You know, if you, if you are in another community, they would introduce it and then table it for a public hearing, and then they would hold the one reading and adopt it at that point. So I understand what you're saying, Tyler, is...
I just feel, this is just, maybe it's just me that thinks this, it's, I understand on smaller topics, it's not as, I mean, I understand we all want good water for the city, but this is a big topic.
This is a big issue.
And if you've already passed it twice, and then you invite people in for their public comment, that's pretty well saying that we're doing this and you can come in and talk, but...
In this particular instance, when we have all the facts, when we've paid good money to come up with the rate study and do all the capital improvement planning, I don't know how we could, regardless of what people say, delay this. I mean, I don't, if we would concede to the people and say, "Okay, well, we won't pass the third reading," then what are you going to do?
Well, basically, what happens is, you have a motion to introduce the ordinance and read it on its first reading by short title only, okay? Then it's read. Now, at that point, if you don't want to take any action, you move to table it until you hold a public hearing. Or you can move to adopt it on first reading, and then you can go on to a second reading. So you have the option. You can do it the other way.
What do you think you'll have the other communities around? I know that you said you sent things out to them just to give us a comparison.
Yeah, we had intended to be able to provide that information at the February 6th meeting.
All right, thank you. Well, I think it's important that at the February 6th meeting, we, regardless of what we do this evening, that we at least adopt the third reading that night so that we can, I mean, like I said, the interest rates aren't going down right now. They're only going to be going the other direction, at least in the near future. So in an effort to do what's best for our community to secure the best interest rate possible, we need to have the ordinance pass on its third reading at the next meeting, regardless of how we do this this evening. I guess personally, I would rather stick to the way we've been doing things and do our two readings, table it, come back, take the public, the public hearing, which, like I said, we hear the comments, we're not going to like the comments, we don't like it either, you know, but it is what it is.
And, you know, you do have the ability to amend the ordinance and then adopt it on third and final reading as amended. So it doesn't mean that you can't make changes to it. It's a little cumbersome, and honestly, if you're looking at doing the projects in the timeframe that you're talking about, the rate increase that's being suggested in the report is probably what you need to adopt. So the only way you're going to be able to change that is probably take some of the projects out of the equation, and then you can come back and adjust the rates accordingly. But, you know, then it's a question of whether that makes sense, and, you know, I am not going to speak for Kevin and Bill and Jeremy, but I suspect that they didn't put those projects in here if they weren't really needed.
If not, I would look for a motion to introduce an ordinance, and I believe it would be ordinance number 2018-2.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2018-2 on its first reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2018-2 in its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2018-2, short title on ordinance establishing amended rates and charges for the use of and services rendered by the Water Works System of the City of Decatur.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2018-2 on its first reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2018-2 on its first reading. Would have roll call vote, and everyone please vote your conscience. Conscience.
Craig Koschoff?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Surt?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2018 on its second reading by short title only.
2018-2.
2018-2.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2018-2 in its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2018-2, short title on ordinance establishing amended rates and charges for the use of and services rendered by the Water Works System of the City of Decatur.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2018-2 on its second reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2018-2 in its second reading. Would have roll call vote, please.
Craig Koschoff?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Surt?
Yes. I'll make a motion to table ordinance 2018-2 for our next meeting, February 6th.
Second. Have a motion and a second to table ordinance 2018-2 until our next scheduled meeting on February 6th, whereas at that time, we'd also have a public hearing before the third reading and possible adoption. All in favor?
Aye.
For the same. Thank you. Thank you, Craig and Jennifer. Thank you, Mark. It'll be a late night for you guys getting home, so thank you so much for coming up here in this cold evening. And we'll see you in three weeks. Next thing I have up is the utility ordinance that we have... Next thing I have up is the utility ordinance that we have been tabling the last few meetings, and we would be in order again tonight to table it once again. It looks as though it may be, maybe the second week in February before we're ready to even strike that ordinance and reintroduce a new one. So, for this evening, I would look for a motion to, again, table ordinance 2017-15.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Matt and a second from Wiley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. Next thing I have is a request from our local Chamber of Commerce. The annual Chamber Dinner is February 15th. That's the annual dinner meeting, and it's the 87th event for the Chamber, beheld the nights at Columbus Pavilion, and the City of Decatur in the past has been a sponsor of this. Last year, we exceeded, I mean, they have different kind of levels, and we went with a $350 sponsorship last year, and that came from Common Council Fund, right?
Yep.
False? Yes. This is a really nice event. They recognize the Stephen Decatur Award, and they also recognize a large business honor and a, and a small business of the year honor. We all are invited and generally attend, so with that, I would ask council to consider us going with a $350 sponsorship again this year. I have to sustain for my conversation on that.
Abstain.
Noted.
Abstain.
Make a motion to continue with our $350 commitment.
Thank you, Matt. Have a motion.
I'll second.
And I have a second from Scott, that we go with the $350 sponsorship for the Chamber Dinner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. We will be putting $350 toward that, and I emailed all of you this afternoon or this evening about the invitation for this. I'll need to know if you and your spouse can attend, so we can let the Chamber know. Hanan Upton Park, Greater Decatur met last evening to discuss moving forward with the renovation of Hanan Upton Park, and one thing this city has never done is raise a million dollars. A few months back, we raised 72,000 in a matter of 45 days, but that's still a drop in the bucket compared to a million dollars, which is what we, what we feel we need to raise from our community to move forward on this project. So, after our meeting last night, it was decided not to move forward with the promotional aspect of it, yet we still have more work to do before we're ready to introduce the marketing campaign and the strategy that we're going to take. However, we did arrive with the fact that this evening, they asked that Melissa and I come to council and ask for the okay, I guess, council, you all budgeted $50,000 for marketing for the City of Decatur in 2018. We would ask that we could get not to exceed $20,000 to go toward marketing for the Hanan Upton Project. We need that now so that we can align ourselves with the means of the marketing, whether through an agency or whatever, and if we get the council blessing with that, we're going to move forward with how and when we would be doing all this. And then, hopefully, at the next, if not the next, sometime in February, we would, we would come back with our plan on when to and how to attack raising a million dollars from Northern Adams County. Does that sound okay, Melissa?
So, you, you're not sure whether you're going to outsource the marketing at this point, or you are, or?
Go ahead, Melissa.
Our Greater Decatur group is well versed in going after the community through the capital campaign and asking for funds. In raising, wanting to raise a million dollars, they need some additional resources in which to do that. So, we're looking at website, we're looking at billboards, banners, marketing materials to arm our folks with, to get them out there with some information.
So, but-
So, there might be some outsourcing of some of the things, like a website, but we're not going to give the project to a marketing firm and say, "Go out and raise our million dollars."
That would take more than 20,000. Yeah, we still-
We just need some tools to be able to raise a million dollars.
And I believe when you do that to a marketing firm, they also take a cut of the money raised-
Right.
-which in turn would make the money that we need to raise higher.
Right.
I've talked with a few people in Greater Decatur, and I think they're more than capable of, I think they can handle $20,000 and, I guess, turn it into more than what we would be ahead if we go pay $20,000.
Right. That's why I'm trying to clarity because-
Now, the mon, this money, when I say a marketing agency, this would be a company that we would use to create a new website. I like Melissa's title, what was it? It was a-
Something like Making Decatur Greater dot org, or something like that. So, it wouldn't just be a landing spot for the Hanan Upton Project, then, in the future, if we needed to raise money for riverfront or downtown sidewalks and future projects that folks know where to go to learn more information, they know how to give, almost similar to what our paternity was. There was a landing spot, there was a video, there's text, there's what's worth spending money on, and there's a button to donate. So, invest in something that can be used long term for additional projects out way beyond what Hanan Upton will do.
Yeah, our city webpage is more geared toward government and-
Which is, is appropriate.
Yeah.
And so, we-
So, this would be a separate Decatur webpage geared toward quality of life and everything that we're promoting to do, not just now, but in the future as well.
Can you go through Patreon, that's the thing, yeah, or not?
Yeah, but we have to have our money.
A reminder about paternity is they want their money to be the last money in this part of their project. So, if there would happen to be funding available, when we get there, we certainly would revisit that, but I don't know if, where they are in contributing, using all their funding and is it-
When we get to $950,000, if they still have, could be more to give.
He's going to manage that site. Is it, we're going to have to hire somebody to manage the site, or?
Well, we're, we have a meeting set up next week with-
We're talking with some, a variety of people who do websites to see what costs, what can be done, management, all those things.
Yeah. I think they're, the company we've talked to, they have a local connection to Decatur, and I think they're very excited to work with us.
If that's who we decide to go with.
So, tonight, you're looking for 20,000 out of our marketing. Yep. 20 of the 50,000 that we have set aside for budgeting, we'd like to go ahead and get it released to be used toward creating our marketing campaign for Hanan Upton.
Did we use all of it last year?
Nope.
Did we use any of it?
I have something I want to hit you back on. I mean, it's a side note from this, I don't even, this is, I'm, agree with this, or we can make a motion to pass this, but we had $50,000 in marketing last year that never got touched. I think we should look into a way or a resource to use the marketing money or a person that would be a marketer for our city, or-
Were you suggesting that we hire another employee?
Well, I'm, I don't know if it has to be a full-time employee, but if there is money that needs to be marketed and it's not getting marketed, we're just falling back when everybody else is marketing themselves. I don't, I'm not saying that hiring an employee is the option, but I'm thinking there needs, we need to explore options to, I don't, best ways to utilize that money. Yes, because, don't get me wrong, the Chamber has started to market the city with events and stuff, but is that the Chamber's job? Is that something that we as a city want to grab a hold of and market because we're going to bring more people into our city? I mean-
I don't think it's the government's, we don't, the government doesn't run the festivals or whatever, no.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying, maybe I worded that wrong, I'm not saying run festivals, but promote to get more people to our town.
Well, I guess I, is, does Main Street fit in there somewhere with what you're talking about?
It's just like, I just, I, we left $50,000 of marketing on the table last year, and it's kind of a, we earmarked it to be used, but it got left on the table. I feel that we didn't follow through with what we said we were going to do. That's not anything to do with what was, that's important. I don't want to get off the subject here, but, but a side note, I guess.
I think, I think last year, the 50,000 dollars that we had earmarked, it's not that we lost that money or anything, it's that the, I think it was kind of geared toward this, and we just didn't get this done last year. Am I right? Yeah, we want to market, we want to market the quality of life in Decatur. That's why we're not asking for all 50,000 of this for Hanan Upton. And I agree with you that we have that money budgeted, let's use it. But right now, the issue at hand is Hanan Upton Park, and-
I think there are some other things going on that's going to lead to a community marketing campaign.
Yep.
The mayor and I have been approached about a video program that we're going to take advantage of, that's going to highlight some quality of life issues. Our HCI is about to go in a direction where we're going to figure out how to, we've got to tell a story, and what is that story, and how do we come up with that? We can't go to a marketing agency without that. So, I think we're building some things to get up to that point. We're not doing nothing, but we're, there's some things in the pipeline that are-
I mean, yeah, this last year, we just didn't have the, we weren't ready to spend that 50, 50,000, we just didn't have the, we weren't there, we weren't there to do it. Yeah, we weren't ready to do it. So, that's why we, you know, I don't want to go spend it if we're not ready to.
And I think that is truly not on our radar as a priority.
Well, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying, like, just go blow 50,000.
Right.
I'm just saying that, you know, the year goes on and things get busier, and I think it needs to be a little more of a focus.
I agree with what you've said.
If it has to be main street.
The thing is, is like, you think it needs to be a little more of a focus, but you know what? We only have so much manpower here ourself, you know? I mean, I'm not a marketing person, I'm not one, I'm not a promoter as such, and, you know, Melissa can only do so much. She is good at it, but she only has so much time, and it's, it's something that, you know, we, I think we just have to take one project at a time, and when, when we're ready to spend more money on whatever it might be, whether it's introducing the plaza, you know, or whether it's a kickoff of the plaza, we might, we may dip into that for a grand opening of the plaza or something, I don't know, or Riverfront, or an aquatics park, or, but there's more, but all these things are going to take time, it's going to take years. It can't all happen at once.
What fund, what fund do we want to pull the money out of?
I think I already have a budget, I think, there. I have it in multiple.
Yeah, she has the money budgeted already.
What fund?
Coming from various funds.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not like there's one fund that's set up for marketing.
You guys-
No, I thought she said council, but I thought you said council's fund or something like that.
Yeah, Council Promotions.
Huh?
I have some in council, I have some in CCD.
Oh, okay.
I have it kind of spread out.
Somewhere on the way.
So, you want a motion?
Yes, please.
Make a motion that we spend $20,000 on, up to $20,000 on the marketing campaign fund for Hanan Upton, all diamonds.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you.
Thank you.
Fellas, do you have an event form from the Chamber of Commerce for yet another exciting event?
Well, we put some highlight on tonight, some fun.
Main Street.
Oh, Main Street and the Chamber. Do the two of you want to explain this?
I'll pitch it.
Yeah. Went around looking for sponsors for summer concert series for the eight shows that I asked for a request for, and from the Chamber, Main Street earlier this year, or maybe it was last year, can't remember, sorry, guys. Anyway, as we, as we went down the road, we found out that German Mutual Insurance is going to have their 150th anniversary. I asked if they would like to play, have a Thursday night concert, if they would like to sponsor a Thursday night concert series, and they said they, they would really like to do something for their policyholders, and, and the public would be funded to do that. I said, "How about a German Fest?" They said, "Well, we think that maybe we would be better off if we did it on a Friday or a Saturday rather than a Thursday evening." I said, "All right, can I form a committee?" Talked to Eric Zelt, who's now a member of Main Street, talked to Tyler, or Wiley over here, the group of Main Street, the other day, and we came to a conclusion, it's very difficult to find a polka band unless it's in the month of August instead of September, October, because the actual German days begin in September. So, we've set this up for Friday, with approval from council, for Friday, August 17th, which would be the Friday of the Kiki Aga Fest, and hopefully, we can have this at Madison Street Plaza. We've got a band that's awesome coming in from Cincinnati, Ohio. I think they played at the Swiss Bern, Bern Swiss Days last year. Hans Klaber or something like that, it's a 78-year-old man, and I'm going to need some participation from the mayor on this because the ritual of the German Fest, being in our first annual, is the mayor goes out there and taps the brass tap into the wooden keg to start the festivities. So, I would hope that you can be in town.
I'm afraid you're going to ask me to sing or something.
It's a 13-piece band, and the people get active, and they'll have two of us in the audience. They'll be, they'll be very interactive with the-
They're coming from Cincinnati, and Eric is-
Zelt.
Zelt is just-
His tail's wagging.
He's, and he's-
Way away.
The band is phenomenal, and it's ready to go.
He is extremely excited. He dresses up and he thinks it goes all over the place. And these, these people have played in, was it Texas and?
Well, they've played outside of the country.
As far as they're available that day, that's amazing.
Well, that's what hinged this whole deal, so. I would ask for a motion from council, let me get this-
Okay, and you've got the event form filled out, you've talked to the-
The only one I didn't catch was Jeremy. I went to his office, so I'll see if I can't get you, so you can hear if you would. Make a motion to approve the event?
I can.
Motion on your calendar to be there, will you?
I got it.
August 17th.
Yes. Motion and a second to approve the event form for the Chamber and Decatur Main Street for the German Fest, August 17th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. At the Board of Works meeting, we, the Board of Works okayed a letter that Tim has from Tom Pittman from Barnes and Thornburg for engaging himself with our bond, as our bond counsel for our water rate bond. And then, also, we also okayed it for Tim Baker as the local counsel, and I would like to bring that up, and Tim, maybe you can elaborate on it again for the, the council segment of the meeting here as to what that's going to cost us.
Well, the, the bonds are tax-exempt bonds, and so, you've got to be very careful to dot all the Is and cross all the Ts when it comes to a bond issue, to make sure that the bonds remain tax-exempt under the Internal Revenue Code. If you don't, then it can create all kinds of lawsuits from bondholders, can also bring in the SEC, who can find the city or prevent the city from bonding in the future. So, you've got to be very careful about how this is done and make sure that you do everything appropriately. That's why you always have bond counsel involved on bond issues. Their primary function is to oversee the entire process and ultimately render an opinion that the bonds are in fact tax-exempt under the Internal Revenue Code. Without that, you are not going to get interest rates as we're anticipating. You would probably have interest rates two to three times what we're, we're thinking, and obviously, the cost of the projects would skyrocket if that were the case. Tom Pittman is with Barnes and Thornburg. Barnes and Thornburg is who we used when we did the general obligation bond for the renovation of the city hall and the police station. They're also the bond counsel that was used for the refunding of the 2007 water bond. So, they're very familiar with the city, they're easy to work with. Tom has been great to work with, frankly, from my perspective, because oftentimes, I'll shoot him an email or give him a call about a matter, it's really unrelated to bond matters, and he's very gracious about taking time to provide some resources or even some answers to questions based on- to questions based on, on the wealth of experience that they have in a major law firm. So it's very helpful and he's been great to work with. So when the mayor and I talked about who we would use, I think Kana likewise felt the same way. His engagement letter indicates that the cost of bond counsel services for the first bond issue is $32,500, the second bond issue $25,000. The reason there's a difference between the two is that the, some of the preliminary work that applies to the first bond issue can also be utilized towards the second bond issue, so there's not as much work to be done when we get to the second bond issue. So that's, that's the reason. And I, my opinion is, Tom was, that's a lot of money and I'm not saying it isn't, but I think Tom probably gave us a pretty good rate compared to what he might have done elsewhere. So I appreciate that, too. And then my fee typically is half of whatever the bond counsel fee is. And the reason for that is, just as bond counsel has station of opinion, so do I. And so I assume personal liability, just like bond counsel does. So, you know, I'm gonna be paying attention to the documentation as well, 'cause I don't wanna be responsible for a liability resulting in lawsuits on a $9 million bond issue. So, anyway, it's a cost of issuance, it's not uncommon, you'll find out with every bond.
These fees for both you and Tom are included in the bond I sent you?
Yes, yeah.
So I would look for a motion from council to approve the engagement letter that Tom Pittman sent us along with Tim's willingness to work for, have that again as our local counsel. So moved?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Thank you. Did you have anything else this evening, Tim?
The only thing that I'll bring up is, I mentioned at the Board of Works meeting, again, legislative update through AIM and I'll keep track of this, but there are two issues that are pending in terms of new legislation that's been introduced in this current session. First deals with small cell facilities. The, they're trying to make it more difficult for local communities to regulate small cell facility locations or oversight, so we'll keep, keep an eye on that. I know that AIM is, is working at that and we're trying to work with legislators on, you know, maybe trying to either fight this proposed legislation or work with legislators to come up with a compromise to throwing out some of the protections that were built into the original legislation that was adopted last year. The second thing, there's more annexation legislation that's been introduced and this one, basically what they're doing in that legislation is saying that if the city got a waiver against remonstrance from a homeowner in order for that homeowner to tie into the city sewer line, that that waiver may no longer be enforceable. So if a homeowner subsequently wanted to fight annexation, the fact that the homeowner signed a waiver in the past may not mean anything. So it's one more, one more incident where the, I mean, what would be the incentive to a community extending service if you're not going to avoid a fight if, at a later time, the city determines that it's in the best interest to annex that area? So you've got, you've got legislators down there that are doing everything they possibly can to minimize the ability of communities to grow.
Cool figure. All right, thanks, Tim. That's all I have on the agenda on, under my own report here. I wanted to make mention and congratulate Melissa and Sandy Collier for their efforts. The Indiana Historical Society has granted Adams County Historical Society a $50,000 grant for restoration efforts on the historical society home, the old Dugan Mansion here in the Adams County Museum. Melissa and Sandy were gonna go down and actually receive the award last week and then we got nasty weather and they weren't, and they actually didn't even have the event. They're just gonna mail us our certificate. Congratulations on the effort put forth on that and it's exciting for the historical museum. That's all I have. How about Department Heads Lenny?
Just thank the Board of Works for the hiring of our recommendation on Seth Colwell. I notified him earlier.
Good. Yeah, earlier this evening, Bob, Board of Works took a recommendation from Lenny. Seth Colwell. C.O.L.
W.E.L.L.
Yeah.
Cold.
Not cold, but cold, C.O.L.W.E.L.L. Thank you. And Mikey, anything?
W.E., thank you.
Kevin? Jeremy? Les? Don? Kurt? Bill? Melissa? Council members? Phyllis? Tim? Public?
Motion to pay the claims.
Second. Motion and a second to pay the claims. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion. Motion to adjourn. Second. Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor? Opposed, the same? We adjourn. Thank you all.